Buddy? We will call to order the regular city council meeting. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Can we begin with roll call, please?
Councilmember Shemmers, Detterman.
Here.
Seeley.
Here.
Davis.
Here.
Obrin.
Mustman.
Here.
Kearns.
Here.
Councilmember Detterman.
Thank you, Your Honor. Approve minutes of regular city council and committee of the whole meetings of July 8, 2025, and they be approved as published on July 22, 2025. Move that be adopted as presented.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the minutes? Can we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Shemmers, Detterman.
Yes.
Seeley.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Obrin.
Yes.
Mustman.
Yes.
Kearns.
Yes.
We'll convene a public hearing concerning accepting bids and awarding contract for Project S-2025 pedestrian ramps. Have we heard anything in the clerk's office?
No, Your Honor.
Is there any citizens that are in the room or online that would like to address the public hearing? I don't see anyone online. Any council members that would like to address the public hearing?
The only thing I did is I contacted Matt and I said I would like them to all be uniform from now on. We've got several different kinds of ADA ramps, and I think that they need to be the same across the board. So he was gonna talk to Jason about directing the contractors.
Okay. Any other discussion for the public hearing? All right, hearing done, we will close the public hearing. Councilmember Mustman.
Thank you, Your Honor. I have a resolution accepting bid and awarding contract for Project S-2025 pedestrian ramps. I move that to be adopted as read.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Can we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Shemmers.
Yes.
Detterman.
Yes.
Seeley.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Obrin.
Yes.
Mustman.
Yes.
Kearns.
Yes.
We'll convene a public hearing concerning the sale of city-owned property at 717 South Fifth Street. Have we heard anything in the clerk's office?
We have not just the two property owners have agreed to split the parcels.
Awesome.
Good.
Okay. Is there any citizens that would like to address the public hearing? Any council members that would like to address the public hearing? Hearing done, we will close the public hearing. Councilmember Shemmers.
Your Honor, I have a resolution authorizing sale of the northerly 12.5 feet of 717 South Fifth Street to Joseph Moore for $150. I move the resolution be adopted as read.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on this? Can we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Shemmers.
Yes.
Detterman.
Yes.
Seeley.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Obrin.
Yes.
Mustman.
Yes.
Kearns.
Yes.
Councilmember Mustman.
Thank you, Your Honor. I have a resolution authorizing sale of the southerly 12.5 feet of 17, excuse me, of 17 South Fifth Street to Dakota Roden for $150. I move that to be adopted as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Can we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Shemmers.
Yes.
Detterman.
Yes.
Seeley.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Obrin.
Yes.
Mustman.
Yes.
Kearns.
Yes.
All right, I did not receive any yellow cards. Any public that would like to address the council on something that's not on the agenda? All right. Seeing hearing none, we'll move on. Councilmember Davis.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented on the attachment.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the consent agenda?
I'd like to call 6B.
B, Bravo?
Yes.
Anything else for discussion on the consent agenda? All right, can we have roll call on the balance of the consent agenda, please?
Councilmember Shemmers.
Yes.
Detterman.
Yes.
Seeley.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Obrin.
Yes.
Mustman.
Yes.
Kearns.
Yes.
Councilmember Seeley.
Thank you, Your Honor. I make a motion. We receive, approve, and place on file claims listings 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, and 6.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the claims items? Can we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Shemmers.
Yes.
Detterman.
Yes.
Seeley.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Obrin.
Yes.
Mustman.
Yes.
Kearns.
Yes.
Councilmember Davis.
Thank you, Your Honor. I have a resolution accepting the annual financial audit report for fiscal year 2023 through 2024. I move that to be adopted as presented.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second. I believe we have Alex online.
I am here. Can you hear me?
Can you hear me?
We got you, sir. Go right ahead.
All right. First, I'd like to thank the mayor and the city council for the opportunity to present the financial fiscal year 2024 audit report. First, starting off, we have the audit opinion and per the top of page 1, which will be page 9 of the PDF of the report. The city received an unmodified opinion on the financial statements, which is the best possible opinion. Next, we have the management discussion and analysis, which is page 4 and 5. And then on the PDF pages, that'll be 13 and 14. And that explains the city's financial statements are presented from two different perspectives. First off, it'll be the government-wide, which provides information on the city as a whole, divided into governmental activities such as the public safety, public works, et cetera, as well as business-type activities, such as the various enterprise funds as a whole. Then we have it from the perspective of the fund financial statements. And this perspective provides information on how money flows in and out of the governmental and proprietary funds. The governmental fund financial statements provide a detailed short-term view of the city's general government operations and the basic services it provides. This information helps determine whether there are more or fewer financial resources that can be spent in the near future to finance the city's programs. The proprietary financial statements account for the city's individual enterprise funds as well as the internal service funds. Then, as shown on the bottom of page 7, which is PDF 16, the city's total net position decreased by $6,396,000. Specifically, the governmental activities decreased by $3,483,000, while business-type decreased $2,912,000. The governmental activities' net position decreased primarily due to an increase in expenditures. The business-type activities' net position decreased due to a decrease in capital grants and contributions, while overall expenses increased. Jumping to GASB 68, and that'll be in footnote 7 on page 49 and 50 of the report. And then PDF pages will be 62 and 63. The city's proportionate share of the overall IPRSI pension liability was $3,267,000 as of June 30, 2024. And per pages 53 and 54, which will be on the PDF pages 66 and 67, the city's proportionate share of the overall MFPRSI pension liability was $11,538,000. These liabilities will fluctuate from year to year depending on how the investments held by each plan perform, as well as a continual reevaluation of the assumptions used by the actuaries to determine the pension liability for each plan. Next, I'm going to be talking about GASB 75, and that'll be in footnote 8 on page 58. And that'll be on the PDF page 71. The city's total other post-employment benefits, OPEB, related to health insurance liability, was $1,360,000. And this liability will also fluctuate from year to year as the assumptions used by the actuary to determine the total OPEB liability are reevaluated. Going to the legal debt limit, and that's on page 104 of the report with the PDF being 122. The city had a legal debt limit, legal debt margin of $13,956,000 at June 30, 2024, which represents 15.2% of its legal debt limit of $92,380,000. This percentage was 27.1% back in fiscal year 18, 21.9 in fiscal year 19, 21 in fiscal year 20, 17% in fiscal year 21. And then in fiscal year 22, it was, or fiscal year 23, it was 16.6%. The city is carrying a significant amount of debt in relation to its legal debt limit margin, and it should carefully monitor its debt load in the future as it considers the issuance of additional debt. Now, I'm going to be talking about the findings, starting on page 115, and that'll be 139 of the PDF. And starting off, we have the segregation of duties. And this was a repeat of last year. The segregation of duty issues identified in the report are primarily repeats. And then we have the next one, which is the financial reporting, which was also a repeat. And during the audit, we identified material amounts of net position and other financial reporting issues which were not properly recorded in the city's financial statements. And then judgments were subsequently made by the city to properly report these amounts. The next one is the reconciliation of utility billings, collections, and delinquent accounts. And this is also a repeat. The utility billings, collections, and delinquent accounts were not reconciled throughout the year, and a delinquent accounts listing was not prepared for both sewer and solid waste and reviewed. Also, utility collections per the computer system were not reconciled to deposits, and we recommend these things be done monthly. In regards to the computer system, during our review of internal control of the computer systems, we noted the city's disaster recovery plan was just missing a few elements. As soon as you fill those holes, this comment can be removed. Then we have the findings in question, CASP, or federal awards. First off is the compliance monitoring, which is a repeat of last year. And as the primary recipient of the lead-based paint grant, the city is responsible to ensure compliance with requirements of federal uniform guidance. The city entered into an agreement with East Central Intergovernmental Association to administer the grant, but the city did not review and maintain documentation to show that they had verified ECIA complied with the requirements of uniform guidance for the eligibility procurement and allowable payroll cost requirements. Then we have the Federal Funding Accountability and Transparent Act comment. And the city did not report subaward information for the lead-based paint grant as required by the Federal Funding Accountability and Transparency Act. Then that leads me into the other findings related to required statutory reporting. The first one is going to be the one covering the certified budget. And this is a repeat comment from last year. In 2024, the amounts budgeted in the public works, health, and social services, community and economic development, capital projects, and business-type functions were exceeded. The budget should be monitored throughout the year to ensure that an amendment is made prior to actual expenditures exceeding the budget. The next comment is revenues, bonds, and notes, and this is also a repeat comment. The sewer revenue note resolutions require the city to establish levy and collect rents and other charges for the sewer system in order to maintain net revenues not less than 110% of the amount of principal and interest falling due within the same year. In fiscal year 24, the sewer fund's net revenue was less than 110% of the principal and interest paid. The city issued its set rates for sewer fund to ensure that the net revenue requirement is met each year. And then that leads me into my final comment, which involves the annual urban renewal report. And this is a repeat as well. The TIF debt outstanding in the cash reported on the levy authority summary were understated. And then the last thing that I have to bring up is the, just some other items. So at June 30 of 2024, the sewer fund had a deficit unrestricted net position of $14,568,000, while the overall net position is a positive because of the $60,792,000 of investment in capital assets. Now, this unrestricted net position for this fund originally became negative for the first time back in fiscal year 24 when it dropped to $645,000, whereas it was a positive for the previous five years prior to that. So I would recommend that the city explore options to bring this fund back to a positive unrestricted net position. So besides that, I would like to thank everyone at the city again for their help during the fiscal year 24 audit, especially Anita. She is always a joy to work with.
Yes, she is.
Alex, thank you very much. Is there any questions or comments from Alex on the audit report? No? All right. Alex, thank you very much. We appreciate you.
Well, thank you for letting me present. All of you have a good evening.
You as well.
Thanks, Alex.
Can we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Shemmers.
Yes.
Detterman.
Yes.
Seeley.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Obrin.
Yes.
Mustman.
Yes.
Kearns.
Yes.
Councilmember Kearns.
Thank you, Your Honor. I have a resolution directing sale of $10,215,000, subject to adjustment per terms of offering, general obligation capital loan notes, series 2025B.
Yep.
I move it adopted as presented.
Second. We have a motion and a second. I believe we have Suzanne online.
Yes, good evening, mayor and council. I am coming to report the good news from the bond sale today. We took bids this morning. This year's issuance, $10,215,000. Received the Moody's A3 rating, which was affirmed from last year. We are issuing these as 15-year non-bank qualified bonds, which means the city will issue over $10,001 calendar year. We received two bids today from 34 different banks that participated in syndicates. The true interest cost, which is sort of that aggregated APR rate that we recommend the award based on, 4.391 for the first-place bidder and 4.393 for the second-place bidder. Just, I mean pennies almost between the winning bidder and the second-place bidder today, which is what we want to see. That means that they had to compete with each other and put their best bid forward to win the bonds today. The winner is Hilltop Securities. They're out of Dallas, Texas. They bid alone. These bonds were also qualified for insurance by two different insurance companies, which the city has been qualified for insurance, I think, every year that I've been working with the city for a long time. And the cover bid came from Robert W. Baird and Syndicate out of Milwaukee, Wisconsin. They had 33 members in their selling group. In today's world, it's not unusual to see Robert W. Baird win a lot of deals because they have a very large selling group to share the sale of the bonds with. So we were very excited to see Hilltop come and win today. When we look at how the bonds priced, the bonds priced, just, where's my sheet? I gotta have all my sheets in front of me. The bonds priced, I don't know where I put my notes. So when we compare how the bonds price to, oh, it's right behind me. The AAA scale, which is what we use as a pricing index for municipal bonds, the 15-year AAA scale was at 3.94% today, and the bonds priced at 4.39% today. And while interest rates are up almost a whole percent from where we were a year ago, the city priced like half of the spreads to last year. So we were very, very, very pleased with the pricing this year. This year, you priced us 45 basis points over that scale, whereas last year you were 94 basis points, almost a whole percent over the AAA scale last year. So we were very excited with how pricing came. And, yeah, and so PFM, actually, the pre-levy resolution that we had put forward, that we prepared the bonds when we make an estimate ahead of time, we actually estimated the coupons exactly. So the city was able to keep the premium on the bonds today with no impact to the debt service fund. It fits exactly, literally, to the penny of what PFM had estimated in the debt service fund in the budget. So with that, PFM would recommend that the city issue these bonds to Hilltop Securities as the winning bidder. And I'm happy to answer any questions anyone might have.
Is there any questions from the council members for Suzanne?
Suzanne, is it a level payment structure on these, or are they front-loaded, rear-loaded? How did we set that up again?
We are wrapping around existing debt. So there's zero principal in '26, and then there's $100,000 in '27 and '28, and then it's level principal and interest thereafter. So we're wrapping around in the first three years. We have some debt paying off in the next three years, and so we're wrapping around that. And then it's level principal and interest thereafter.
Okay. Any other discussion or questions from council? Suzanne, thank you very much for being here. We appreciate it.
You're welcome. Congratulations on a very successful sale.
All right. Last chance for any discussion? Can we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Shemmers.
Yes.
Detterman.
Yes.
Seeley.
No.
Davis.
Yes.
Obrin.
Yes.
Mustman.
Yes.
Kearns.
Yes.
Councilmember Detterman.
Thank you, Your Honor. Resolution approving and authorizing execution of a First Amendment to the purchase, sell, and development agreement by and between the city of Clinton and Hobel Renewable Diesel LLC. Move that to be adopted as presented.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Discussion on this? Sure.
So I talked to a couple of council members today on this. The only thing that changed is when they're going to meet with IEDA. So it was supposed to be July 18, and they asked to slide that out to November. Everything else stays the same as far as when they would purchase the ground, when they would move forward with everything else. So just one more time, they are in the final of their offtake contract, and that will go to the, for signature in September. So they want to get that completed first before they go back to IEDA.
All right. Any questions or discussion on this agreement?
They're getting their signature in September, but we're going into December.
So they're going to get their agreement offtake in September. Then they need to get prepared to go to the IEDA board for November 14. Nathan from Allers said it could take 30 to 60 days with IEDA to finish all that pieces and parts. Because as you guys know, they need to have IEDA's approval, which then provides the tax abatement that you guys have approved in the development agreement.
Do we ever, I honestly, I mean, I feel like this is our never-ending saga. Do we ever get to call IEDA and ask them how they're feeling about this?
IEDA's feeling fine. They're fine.
Okay.
Yep. This really is back to us on, you know, the closing is supposed to be, you know, the end of December, so everything's still online. IEDA needs to have debt and equity all completed. And so that's the part they're getting the debt and equity piece completed with their offtake partner that's happening in September.
Any other discussion?
And they're still making option payments every month.
That started back up again?
Nope. It's been continuing, yeah.
Continuing. There was only a couple of months that I think they, that we paused, yeah.
Yeah, $10,000.
Per month, yep.
Right.
All right. Any other discussion?
I, yeah, I had a page full of questions, but, so we're not actually extending. So I did say at the last meeting I wouldn't extend anymore, but this is just a modification of how the process they're going through. So I hope we get this together and get it done here by December.
Be hopeful in many, many ways.
Yep. Yeah.
All right. Last chance. Can we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Shemmers.
Yes.
Detterman.
Yes.
Seeley.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Obrin.
Yes.
Mustman.
Yes.
Kearns.
Yes.
Councilmember Obrin.
Thank you, Your Honor. I have a resolution approving and authorizing the execution of a 28E agreement between the city of Clinton and the Clinton Community School District for the School Resource Officer SRO program. Move this resolution be adopted as presented.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on this?
We're gonna have deputy come up. No, I'm just kidding. Deputy Jim, just kidding. So Kevin and I met with Wes Golden and Cindy McLeir, and nothing but good words from Wes and the team. And he wishes he could have them even more. And so if you guys remember, the reason we have the additional one now is the state is actually funding that one at 90%, right? So that's really helpful. But otherwise, we split the costs 50/50, our percentage of those costs. But once again, couldn't say anything better about having the relationship with the city and having those resource officers in the school, so.
Now, this was a hot-ticket item. Were any of you sitting here back then?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
I was on that side.
You were out there. We went round and round for several meetings over SROs. Because they were, we didn't, people didn't want to pay for it. It was a, this whole room was packed.
And there was a lot of projections of what they might be and what they might not be.
Yep.
And it ended up, as we now know, it's a very integral part of what's going on.
Yeah. But it was a wild time. You probably remember, Pat.
I do.
Yeah. So it's just kind of interesting how in 10 years we can go from a packed room of controversy to probably, yeah. Oh, yes.
Yep.
All right.
As Ozzy would say, the winds have changed.
The winds have changed.
Any other discussion on this? Okay, can we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Shemmers.
Yes.
Detterman.
Yes.
Seeley.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Obrin.
Yes.
Mustman.
Yes.
Kearns.
Yes.
Councilmember Kearns.
Thank you, Your Honor. I have a resolution approving a 28E agreement between the city of Comanche, the city of Clinton, the city of DeWitt, Clinton County, and the Clinton County Sheriff's Office relating to joint emergency communication services for Clinton County. I move it be adopted as presented.
Second. We have a motion and a second. I can start discussion on this. So I sit on the Communications Commission, which runs the 911 dispatch center. And when we were dealing with, I guess going back a little bit, we had, this all started when we had a disciplinary action we needed to do with an employee, right? We got into the bylaws, and we found on here, there's a Communications Commission, there's a technical oversight board. The technical oversight board has the chiefs, fire, and police of all the entities here. We found that the commission was in charge of the budget and charge of the responsibility of the operations, but the disciplinary actions was the technical oversight board that had to do that. So that's kind of what spurred us getting into this. Really, that was one of the biggest things that we made. We made a couple of changes in here. Originally, it was 2012 was the last draft. We did have some code changes in here that are referenced that we needed to update. This went through the technical oversight board unanimously, went through the Communications Commission unanimously. So this got completed around the December-January timeframe. Probably should have been sent out a little bit sooner. We did not have a director for about, over a year, about a year and a half. So between myself, sheriff, and our interim director, it kind of fell by the wayside as we finished this, and then we started. We do have a director now, and we need to get this through Clinton and then the rest of the communities to have the signature on the changes in here. So it's really not that big of a modification anywhere. If you looked at the track changes document that I sent to you, it's pretty minor stuff. And the other thing, too, we were referred to as commissioners and then board of directors in the thing throughout it. So we cleaned it up to where it's just commissioners. If you looked at the track changes document that I sent to you, it's pretty, pretty minor stuff. And the other thing, too, we were referred to as commissioners and then board of directors in the thing throughout it. So we cleaned it up to where it's just commissioners. So a lot of those words changed in there, too. So is there any questions from anybody on the document?
I just want to say with the track changes that were made, that was extremely helpful in looking and saying, okay, this is why this needed to be updated. This was updated for here. It saved a lot of, oh, okay.
I realized that the original version had no highlights or anything, so.
Yeah, we haven't seen this, you know. Our group has never seen it.
Correct.
And so here's a new piece that we're looking at and seeing what was happening, you know, a decade ago or more, you know, and now we're updating things. And that's what we, and we're finding that as we look through things, we are updating routinely instead of not letting those things, you know, fall by the wayside. And then all of a sudden, oh, my goodness, we haven't done it in 20 years.
And this did go through legal, county attorney Mike Wolf went through this stuff. So that, it did have a legal review on it before it was voted on by the commission members as well, so. All right? Anything else?
Is that, like, 8B was the one you're talking about?
Personnel matters. Personnel matters, no. It was 8C.
Oh, C.
Any disciplinary action that results in the suspension, blah, 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 would be the executive committee is what it was. And it was the Technical Oversight Board before, which was kind of an odd scenario in there, and kind of everybody agreed. So we worked on this. It was myself, Sheriff Greenwald, Chief Schute, and Chief Porter are the ones that kind of worked on the amendments and then brought them to the entire committee for, for consideration, so. All right?
Yep.
Can we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Shumers.
Yes.
Dederman.
Yes.
Sealy.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Obrin.
Yes.
Musman.
Yes.
Kearns.
Yes.
Councilmember Sealy.
Thank your honor. I have an ordinance for the first consideration.
Please read the title.
An ordinance amending city code 31.071 pertaining to acting city administrator appointments.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on this?
I have one thing. As I was thinking about this after the last meeting, I, for lack of a better word, I think we got in the weeds a little bit on this. And my thought was, we really should just take out the city attorney as the acting administrator and, and leave in a portion where the council, if there's a, if there's a extended absence, prolonged illness, or a vacancy, then obviously council would appoint in that scenario. If, if Matt or a future administrator down the road is on vacation, I'm not quite sure we need to appoint an acting administrator. To me, I think that's overkill. Like, if you work in an organization and, and the boss goes on vacation, I don't know a lot of places where they're appointing someone to make decisions on their, on their behalf as they're on vacation. I think our department heads are pretty great at what they do, and they're going to do the right thing. And if I was department head A, whatever, and I was appointed as the acting administrator, and, I mean, I'm pretty sure I would call Matt to make an important decision. I'm not sure I would do it without his consent anyway. And with phones and cell, computer and all that stuff, I mean, he's accessible unless he's in the mountains somewhere, which did happen once, but he still was on a, on a call for a closed session, right, when he was, was out there.
Officially Yosemite.
So, I mean, if, if council wants to have the, you put the thing on the, with a file with the city clerk, I think that's fine. But I think, I think we overthought it a little bit. I think it's appropriate to take the city attorney's name out of there as far as the acting administrator. But then if it's, if it's an absence that's going to be longer than, you know, a vacation or something, then council would have to step in and determine if they want to appoint an acting administrator or not. That's, that's my thought. But up for discussion for, for anybody, what they think. It's just simpler. Does that make sense, Pat?
Yep.
It's how every other city does it that I've seen.
Yeah.
Including the larger cities that don't have a deputy. So I don't think it would be unusual just to do what you said, mayor, and just have it, say what it says, except get rid of the city attorney.
Yeah.
As power-mad and craven as I can be, you know, wanting power over people, I really don't want that job, so.
I just, I tried to think about other organizations and, you know.
Yeah, we functioned just fine when Matt's out of town and everybody knows what they're doing. And it would only be if he was disabled and he couldn't do his job that the council would get involved and say we need an interim or something until he comes back or whatever.
Right.
In which case, we already have that power to do, so.
What would it read then exactly?
Um, let's see here.
Go back to the old strike through and just take out the last sentence, right?
Take out the last sentence, because you already have. During the absence of the city by levers. The city council may designate.
Yeah, and maybe, in that first sentence there, instead of by leave of the city council, I guess, I don't know, you could put a couple extra words in there. I came up with, in the event of an extended absence, prolonged illness, or vacancy in the office of city administrator, city council may appoint an acting administrator to exercise powers, perform the duties until the administrator returns or the vacancy is filled. Something, something simple.
Is that how you want to amend it, administrator?
I mean, I can't make a motion to amend, but I, I was, I was kind of playing, I was playing around with language.
I like that language.
Yeah, I mean, it was, it was simple, and it got the point across of what we were doing. You know, really, like I said, I mean, most, most department heads are going to make the decisions for their departments, but if it's something, something big.
This reads pretty good.
Yeah.
So I guess that kind of gives you a little leeway where you don't have to.
Do you want the, did you read both paragraphs?
Yeah.
You want, you think both of them are good? I wasn't sure, I wasn't sure the first paragraph was necessary.
That has to, that's like when he's on vacation, and that's if something happens.
Yeah, so I guess I can read the whole thing. So I, the paragraph that I had, and then the other paragraph was during short-term or excused absences such as vacation or brief illness, the city administrator may designate a department head to temporarily perform the duties if deemed necessary. Such designation shall be made by written notice to city clerk. So it kind of says what you have in there. I wasn't sure if that paragraph was really necessary. I felt like that second paragraph was probably sufficient to, to do it.
Well, I mean, I guess the second paragraph isn't terrible if the, in the event that Matt takes a world cruise and he is not, you know, so you could leave it in there because it just says he can if he wants to.
Yeah, yeah, I mean.
Doesn't have to, right?
Right, doesn't have to. It says, yeah. But, but does he have to follow the same process where you're going to file with the city clerk of who it is? Yeah, I mean.
But if I was on a world cruise and say, you know, I don't know if you guys saw the Netflix show about the poop cruise, where they get stuck at sea, right?
It's pretty bad.
If you're stuck at sea, then you guys could actually call a special meeting and appoint somebody.
Right.
You know what I mean?
Correct.
It kind of, the second paragraph goes back to that.
I think it just basically, I think basically, basically, Matt's the administrator if he's on vacation, everybody just does what they're supposed to do. The chart that you had last meeting, I mean, if a disaster happens, there's already kind of protocols to handle it. You know, each department knows what they're doing. And then, yeah, if it's something like that, then it's you seven that make the decision of, you know, this is going to be a prolonged absence, we need someone to fill in, so.
Especially if you had to send somebody to court, because then you can, you know.
So could you just read the paragraph that we're, per bill's motion?
That's what I was about ready to do.
I put, so in the event of an extended absence, prolonged illness, or a vacancy in the office of the city administrator, the city council may appoint an acting city administrator to exercise the powers and perform the duties of the city administrator until the city administrator returns or the vacancy is filled.
I move to amend.
Second.
All right. We have a motion and a second. Yep, we'll give this to the clerk, so she can do that. Any other discussion on that amendment?
We need two votes, then.
Oh, sorry, yes. So we have a motion to amend the ordinance, right?
Yes.
Do we need two votes, though? That's the first consideration. We just need to vote to amend it.
Yeah, a motion to amend and then a motion for it as amended.
Vote to amend the draft, pass that, and then vote to pass the first reading as amended.
First reading.
Two votes.
So roll call on the amendment, please.
Councilmember Shumers.
Yes.
Dederman.
Yes.
Sealy.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Obrin.
Yes.
Musman.
Yes.
Kearns.
Yes.
Councilmember Shumers.
Your honor, I have an ordinance for the first consideration.
Please read the title.
An ordinance amending the municipal code of the City of Clinton, Iowa by amending section 52.090 entitled sewer use charge for the purpose of establishing a generally applicable sanitary sewer rate or charge for certain contract users.
Second. We have a, we have a motion and a second discussion on this. Do you want to go through it?
Councilmember Sealy wanted me to ask, ask your question. You only had 12.
I had a lot of questions.
Which one do you want me to kind of hit on?
Um, I, you cleared it all up, so you can tell them what everything is important.
So appreciate Anita's help on this. Basically, this, this is two different things in this. The first one that says less than 10,000 gallons at $7.70 is where the dumping station is.
Oh, okay.
So that's where the septic tank guys would, or gals would go in, RVs could go and dump, and that's the rate why it's that. Then we use the 345, which is also similar to residential, but we also did it because as a utility, you have to deem what you need for revenue to cover your expenses. And so in this case, this was created because if Lomore goes ahead and purchases, excuse me, if Iowa American Water purchases Lomore's wastewater system and send to us, it'll be a private entity sending to a public entity, which has never happened in the state of Iowa, where we like to be first in things. And in that case, then you have a contract with that Iowa American Water versus a 208E like we will remain with Commande for. And so with that contract, then it spells out legally, you have to have the cost of those per gallons in an ordinance. So this will actually, the reason it's labeled G is because every time, and we talked about this in the Finance Committee, because every time they, we amend this and bring it to the council, you just keep adding them in there and they all stay. And so this will be G effective September 1st for those gallons that are there as far as flow. In the case of with Lomore, they're less than 20,000, so they'll be at the $3.85 range, which we felt was sufficient for the pump station that's out there as far as infrastructure that we have a debt on, and then also some of the pieces and parts of the percentage they use at the actual reclamation facility for that. And so we worked with Timothy Whipple from Allers to put this together, and he guided Anita and I for this. And I don't know if the Finance Committee, we have, we had several council members at the Finance Committee, if you guys, they had a lot of questions, too, so, but I think we answered them all.
Any discussion from council members on this? Councilmember Obrin?
Just as a, when we had the Finance Committee, this was like, wow, this is really something that never happened before. That's what, that's what caught my mind. Nobody is doing this anywhere in the state of Iowa. And so, you know, we had to kind of look at it from a point of view as what are the costs going up for actually doing the operation? But then we have to look at the costs for doing, you know, in 10 years, we got to fix something. So that's how those numbers kind of, you know, massaged into what we're looking at.
All right. Anything else? Can we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Shumers.
Yes.
Dederman.
Yes.
Sealy.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Obrin.
Yes.
Musman.
Yes.
Kearns.
Yes.
Councilmember Kearns, 6B.
6B. I just wanted to draw attention to some numbers on the Finance Committee minutes. The animal care charges for the last three years have gone astronomically past our budget. These are charges to the Clinton Humane Society for hoarding cases along with the stipends that we give them every month. I think we've actually gotten another bill since then, since May, and I think we're going to be up around $600,000 in the last three years, which is a lot. I know that they've got a contract coming up that we're going to have to make some hard decisions on. So I just wanted to put these numbers in front of everybody and start preparing you to, you know, put your thinking caps on. We need to come up with some alternatives.
Yeah, the big, the part that's hard is that we do have a contract for 100,000 each year, but the last 13 months that we're tracking, we talked in the Finance Committee, it was basically, we, we went over $300,000 during that time. And as we start to look at, you know, people just as important as animals and seeing where we can, you know, streamline costs, this is a, and what I said in the Finance Committee is if we had three different things like this happen, we would, that'd be a million dollars almost that we did not project. It's unsustainable.
It, we can't sustain it, and sadly, what came up in a small work group that we did is do we want to be laying people off so they're paying for animal care? Or do we need to come up with a cheaper method to do this? And that's something we're all going to have to think about.
When's the contract negotiation?
I think it's September.
Is it? Okay. All right.
Probably August, actually.